We'll have a moment of silent meditation and pledge of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call this meeting in the Montague County Commission to order. It is Wednesday, June 5th, 2024, 10:00 a.m. EST Eastern Standard Time. Let the record reflect that all three commissioners are present. First item on the agenda is consent and approval with our county administrator, Renata McClure. Good morning.
Good morning, Renata.
We have no exonerations for you to approve today. Minutes for May 29th, 2024 vouchers. General County, 179,49881, 911, $254. Chestnut Ridge Park, 11,0021898. Camp Muffley, 2,0061984. Mason Dixon Park, 2,039 at 21. Mon County Center, 2,029338. Recreation levies, 3,00636. Reallocated coal, 2,070904. Assessor's valuation, 4,0283. University Town Center, TIF, 9,0069412. Purchasing card vouchers, General County, 23,15146. 911, 1,03359. Camp Muffley, 750. Mason Dixon Park, 71018. Assessor's valuation, 78850 for a voucher total of 244,6811. No budget revisions. Position vacancies for boards and authorities are listed on our website and fiduciary orders for June 5th, 2024.
Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We have any additional fiduciary items?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is introduction of new employee personnel changes. Camp Muffley.
We have Tori Wolf, who is going to be seasonal part-time lifeguard. $11 per hour. Start date is today, June 5th.
Move to approve Tori Wolf as a seasonal part-time lifeguard at Camp Muffley. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Any additional personnel changes?
No, sir.
Okay. Moving right along. Next item on the agenda is comments from the public. We will now open the comments from the public session of the meeting. Anybody wishing to be heard, raise their hand, come forward, state their name and address, and be heard. Come on. Sarah?
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
I just wanted to stop by today to invite you and all of Mon County to join. I didn't state my name, sorry. Sarah Palfrey, Morgantown Public Library. Our summer reading program has just kicked off, and I'm here to invite everybody to come and join us. Every year, we try and outdo ourselves a little bit from the summer before. And this summer is no different. I'm really proud of the staff and the program that they've put together. I left copies of our calendars up there for you. New this summer, we have a preschool calendar as well. So we've accumulated all the preschool age programs that we're doing across the county into one calendar. And we're really encouraging our community members to visit as many locations as they can. So to go along with that, this year we're giving out reusable bags with treasure maps on them. And you can get a different PIN for every location that you go to. We have six locations in the county. And it also includes some of our partner programs that we're holding this year with Bow Park at Creps. And with the county park system, our end of summer party is at Camp Muffley. It's a big pool party. So enough of a reason to participate then, to be able to attend that at the end of the summer. And because we believe that, you know, reading and storytelling is important for everybody in our entire community, we also have prizes for adults. If you want to relive your book-it days, you can sign up as an adult. We have an online reading log for you to use. And we've added some extra challenges in that put you in for more drawings for more prizes, which are mostly gift cards from local businesses, including, I think Pathfinder is on the list this year. And there's usually at least a coffee shop or two. We're working with an overall adventure theme. So we know that the county has a lot to offer, and people can't necessarily show up every week to a program. So we also have to-go kits for families that, you know, can't make a regular Wednesday morning kind of a thing. And you can stop by any of the facilities throughout the week to pick up a kit that's got instructions and craft supplies and book suggestions and ideas how to make your own reading adventure at home. So we hope to surpass. Last year was one of our biggest numbers we've ever had. We went just over 600. So we're hoping to surpass that this summer. And with the work that the staff has put in at Clay Patel and Cheat and Arnettsville and the Clinton libraries, as well as the downtown library, I think we're gonna do it. So I left you all calendars and one of our sample pins. That's one of our adventure cryptid weeks there. We've got Bigfoot pins for you.
Okay. Thank you very much, Sarah.
Congratulations on that levy.
Will you be around for the whole meeting?
Maybe.
Okay. Well, I know I owe you a call back, so I need to touch base with you regarding a couple items. Okay. Anybody else?
Hi there. Y'all know who I am.
The public may not.
Yes. Mary Ann Foles, 828 Bloody Run Road. I wanted to, actually got a couple of topics, so I'm wondering if I can talk about one and then go sit down and call back up again. I'm joking. I'm not gonna do that. No, I'm not gonna break your rules. Okay. But the topic I want to talk about today. Last night, I went to a public education event on drugs in our community that was held at Calvary Church. And there were some concerns about how this opioid money that we're about to get as a community is gonna be spent. And some of the things that came up were the rules on what the money can be spent on and not be spent on. On education and prevention was a big thing, trying to see if we can get into the schools. Law enforcement, what the money can go there or not. And then some of the rules with regard to harm reduction. So in general, what I wanted to do is just let you know that the community has ideas. And they have concerns about where the money can be spent. So I have two requests for you. One is I'd request before the money is handed out that you have a couple of public hearings slash townhouses, town halls, just to let the public come in and give ideas to public officials on where their concerns are and where they think, you know, we can best use this money. And, you know, it's input. I think there's always value in input. And then the second one is, you know, my request would be that we create some kind of a public committee so that there could be ongoing feedback. And I've had a lot of luck getting on committees, so I mean, I'd be willing to, you know, to start that up if you all are willing to allow something like that. So those are my two things. And I'll have to come back again another day for my second time. Thank you.
You have time. Just if you have something else you want to talk about?
Oh, well, I'll just come back. I'll come back, because I know I got the three minutes. I don't wanna ruin your world. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good morning. My name is Amy Gumney. I'm an employee at the assessor's office, and I am here representing the employees at the assessor's office that are requesting U M W A representation. Mr. Bloom had stated that he had not heard from any of the employees concerning this request, so I'm here to kind of clear that up. We've lost confidence in our county commission to do right by us and are seeking representation to help keep everything honest. You sit in a total autocracy and claim total transparency. You participate in a good old boys' club, and we are indignant, I'm sorry, and are indignant and rude when questioned or condescending remarks when we try to participate in meetings. You've told us that you did not hire us, and you don't have to answer to that. That statement was made by Mr. Bloom directly to me. You tell half truths to the media concerning our insurance and pay raises. For example, in June of 2023, you told WAJR our premium increase for 2023 would be $17 a month, when in truth it was double that. That same statement was again printed in a WAJR article a month later in July. In that same June 23rd article, Mr. Sikora stated that the county pays $70,000 per employee for our healthcare. I'd like to know where you come up with that, because during my research, I could only come up with $11,000 that year paid for our insurance. Quite a bit of difference between 70 and 11. In an article from AJR dated 7/26/23, the county commission claimed they were giving employees a $1,500 cost of living raise. And I quote, "Every year I've been here, we've given the employees something, so we certainly wanted to take care of the employees that take care of us," said Sikora. What you failed to mention was that if an employee had been given any type of raise in that last year, you did not give them a cost of living raise. So employees that had taken on more work or had stepped into a new position was not given a cost of living raise at that time. In addition to that, when we asked why we didn't get the raise, we were told that the assessor was given money in his budget to give raises, and what he chose to do with that money was up to him. Less than 20 employees out of the office were given the cost of living raise. Not exactly alive, but not exactly the truth either, because every employee did not get a raise. However, in March of 2022, the county commission gave one of their employees a $7,916 raise, and one special employee got $9,499 raise. That was a 23.17% increase for that special employee. Covered her medical costs, I'm sure. I would also like to mention that we are not a poor county. As a county, we have carried a surplus in excess of $8 million for the last two years. In addition to that surplus, the projected increase for revenue from taxes for 2025 is estimated to be an additional 5.8 million. So with that kind of surplus, I have to ask why? Our insurance premiums continue to go up. Our deductible has raised. Our coverage is 90-10. The cost of living has skyrocketed. So why do you choose not to give a cost of living raise to the employees that keep this county in that surplus? So let this service notice from the members of the assessor's office seeking representation from the U M W A that we have voted no confidence in our county commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm Crowe. I was blindsided. My name is Mike Payton. I live in Mon County and vote. I live out in McCurdysville. And I am a concerned citizen and not really happy with the commission's response to suppress the workers' voices. They're just asking to have a vote for us to represent them. Now, they said, your all's response was that you don't need a third party. I believe the county commission association of West Virginia, Mon County pays dues for the commissioners and their management staff to be members of, and they lobby in Charleston on you all's behalf. To me, in my world, that's called a union. Everybody else calls it an association. So I'm asking the commission to reconsider the resolution that we asked for you all to pass, because it's kind of hypocritical. When you're part of an association, the lobby's on your behalf and speaks as a third-party thing, to look at your workers and tell them to do as I say, not as I do. So please, we're not going away, and we would love to work with the commission and to have you all pass the resolution to allow them to have a vote. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Close the public comment section of the meeting. Next item on the agenda is grants. None? Okay. Next item is receipt of submissions regarding requests for qualifications against 2024 MCC 001 Montague County Facilities Assessment and Master Plan. Is that what these are?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And we received a response from, let me see here, Silling Architects, Desmond, the Mills Group, and Hugh Hart Horn. So we received four responses. The next step would be for us to review those responses and rank them from a qualification standpoint and then take the next step. So I'll motion to accept the responses as received.
So moved. Second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is correspondence. A draft revised employee handbook. This is a drafted letter to the office holders of Montague County regarding our revised employee handbook for Montague County in general. Do you want to read the letter?
Sure. Sorry, you caught me off guard.
Sorry.
I didn't know you were gonna have me read this one. In early 2023, each of you were given, so this would be addressed to the elected officials. In early 2023, each of you were given an opportunity to complete an HR needs assessment. Based upon the feedback we received, one of the main items was the adoption of an employee handbook to be used for all county employees. With the assistance of our HR consultants, Align HR, the county commission has been working diligently for the last year to draft a handbook that is compliant with all federal and state regulations and serve as the primary repository for employee-related policies to be followed throughout the county for all employees. This handbook will help set expectations for employees, educate them on their workplace rights, and assist in mitigating risk. Providing a consistently updated employee handbook will supply a better framework for proper uniformity within the county between competing employment policies. Employment risk management is important to the county. The MCC has collaborated with our consultants to provide elected officials and department heads with appropriate compliance standards that minimize HR risks in all areas of the county. The MCC, acting as the governing body and designated fiscal agent for the county, are ultimately responsible for legal expenses and/or costs associated with any defensive claims against any offices or employees of the county acting in their official capacity. Therefore, any type of employment claims that necessitate legal expenses or required settlement payments arising from the employment-related claims against any elected officials, and that official office chose not to elect and adopt the MCC employee handbook, the elected official will be responsible for these expenses. The MCC urges each elected official to join us in adopting the proposed handbook for your employees effective July 1st. If you choose to adopt a different handbook, you must have it reviewed by legal counsel and/or a third-party HR specialist. If during the required review process conflicting employment-related policies or areas of noncompliance with federal and state laws arise, the MCC handbook will supersede. Please confer with the county administrator, county legal counsel, and/or their designees for additional guidance. And then it gives them the option to elect yes or no, and then they have to sign.
So this letter will be released to all the elected officials, and along with a draft of the handbook. And we expect to fully adopt the handbook. So during the month, if we receive any responses or any input that we see is valid, we will incorporate that. But it's our estimate to approve the handbook in effect of July 1st. So that'll be the first meeting in July, which I believe is July 3rd.
Yes.
So, okay. Do you guys have anything else to comment on that?
No, I think it's self-explanatory. The federal and state laws have changed, and our handbook was not up to the new laws.
Okay. All right. Notification from Woda Cooper Companies regarding their participation in the IRS Code Section 42 Low-Income Housing Tax Credit Program.
So they have provided notice for three properties. One is Mallard Green. That is on West Run Road. Cedar Glen, it is Madeline Circle. And Cedar Glen 2, which is another on Madeline Circle. So those are three from Woda Company. Then we also received, in addition, from the West Virginia Housing Development Fund, notice that a 60-day public comment period is now opened, and that started on June 3rd, for Twin Knobs Apartments. White Oak Landing. White Oak Manor. And I think that's it.
Yeah. So there was the White Oak Landing one is the developer Spire Development, and that's in the Van Vors area. The White Oak Manor one is Spire Development. That's also in the Van Vors area. You mentioned the Woda Group one. Theirs is called Cedar Glen, and it's in Madeline Circle area. Cedar Glen 2 is in Madeline Circle area. Mallard Green is also the Woda Group, and that's in the West Run area. And then Twin Knobs is in the Twin Knobs area, wherever that is.
That's Cheat Lake.
Cheat Lake, Office of the Fire Department.
So anyhow, those notifications have been received and acknowledged. Any other correspondence?
That is all I have.
Okay. Unfinished business, none? New business. Consideration is set in employee premium contribution amounts to apply towards medical, dental, vision premiums for plan year effective August 1, 2024. You have, you provided in the folder the rates, the breakdown as provided. I'll go ahead and ask for a motion, and then we can go ahead and discuss.
Move to approve the rates as presented. Second.
Okay. So this is the rate schedule that Renata has provided in the folder. They represent, for a couple of years, we've been struggling with how to deal with increases as they come in every year. We've been trying to get to a policy as to how we will distribute those rates so that we can be consistent year in and year out. And this year, we were close enough to be able to get to that. So these premiums represent a 5% contribution by employees and a 95% contribution by the commission for the single employee plans. And then all the other plans represent a 90-10 split between county contribution and employees. Do you guys want to say anything else regarding the?
We also, upon the recommendation, we split employee and child and employee and spouse. We needed to separate that to make it fairer for all the employees, so it equalized.
So we created another tier. This year, we have four tiers.
It was an incredible amount of work over the last few months. And going through this, we were faced with an unprecedentedly, unprecedentedly? An unprecedented high increase at our initial renewal rate. And we've worked diligently to get that back into a range that seemingly is fair and acceptable to the commission and to our employees. So I appreciate all the extra work that was put in by President Sikora and by our administrator, Renata McClure, in working through this with USI.
So some of the other things that we talked about whenever we approved the plan, we approved the plan a couple of weeks ago. This is just providing the breakdown in employee versus commission. But to reiterate some of that, the previous plan year, we had a high deductible health plan that had a 2,500, 5,000 deductible. So we applied a $2,000 health savings account to that. So the employee was responsible for the remaining 500 or 3,000. And then we had a PPO 700 plan where employees were responsible for the 700 or 1,400. This year, we dropped the HDH being created a PPO 6,000 plan with four tiers and a 6,000, 12,000 deductible. So those deductibles obviously are what's driving keeping the premium down. But we kept the employee contribution. In some instances, we actually lowered the employee contribution at deductible while the commission is taking on the full responsibility for the remainder of the $6,000 deductible, which the employee is responsible for 750, and the 12,000 deductible, which the employee is responsible for 1,500. The move of four tiers adjusts the premium to reflect where most costs are by creating a tier for just employees and spouse. And through all of our research, our historical data shows us that spouses make up 30% of our members, but over 70% of the cost. So this adjustment is consistent with the industry and ensures that costs are distributed more fairly. Premiums lowered for about 20% of employees with this plan. Employee responsibility for deductibles are lowered for about 23% of employees for this plan. And then we're looking at premium-deductible combination. We see a decrease of about, for about 62.41% of our employees. So overall, there was a 69,783 overall increase in a premiums, which was about a 1.4% increase. 45,000 of that is being absorbed by the commission, and 24,000 is being absorbed by the employees. But when you combine the overall employee premium increase of 24,000 with the deductible savings, the impact to the overall employees is about negative 25,000, or a decrease of about 3.72%. When you combine the commission's premium increase of 45,000 with the increase of deductible risk of about 358,000. And 358,000 is in addition to the 410,000 that we did last year for the health savings account. So overall, we're incurring a $768,000 risk on behalf of our employees to cover the deductible. And that's assuming a 40% realization of deductibles. If that number goes up, the risk goes up to almost 1.9 million. It's all on the backs of the commission if those percentages go up. But the 40% is where we think we're gonna end up, and that's where we're planning for this year. So the estimated cost at the 40% is about an 8.14% increase to the commission. So overall, we don't have any, we haven't said anything in writing, because we can't bind future commissions. But we're going to try to stick to an unwritten policy of 95-5, 90-10. We're going to, we developed this four-tier system, which distributes the cost more efficiently. We drove down the premiums by taking on the higher deductible, which the commission has taken on that responsibility. We're taking on an HRA program, which replaces the HSA program, where we just gave the money out at the beginning of the year, and the HRA program is only used as actuals come in. The county only gets billed as those actuals come in. So most importantly, we've done that to reduce the risk to the employees, to basically keep the employees whole and the level that they're at while incurring all the risk at the level of the commission. So we're slowly moving to a fully insured-type plan. But this is just kind of, this is a major step towards that direction, so. Oh, and there were dental increases. The commission is absorbing all those increases, and the vision plan is the same as last year. So. Anything else?
Just, we did look at four different companies. Two refused to even respond because they couldn't match it. And the other two couldn't meet the requirements and the costs. So this was the lowest. And actually, we continually have the Cadillac plan of the entire state. And I would share, and I would hope that the employees would look at this compared to any other plan that is in Montague County.
So we have a first and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. You may now say passes. Consider approval of appointments to the Montague County Waste Authority, the Chestnut Ridge Advisory Board, and the Route 2 I-68 Authority. We'll take the Montague County Solid Waste Authority first.
Michael McCauley has been serving as the representative on behalf of the commission for the Solid Waste Authority. We've had that listed on our website for several weeks, and he wants to be reappointed.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chestnut Ridge Advisory Board.
Same, Todd Ensign. He's been serving, I think he filled maybe a two-year or an unexpired term from someone else, and so he would like to be reappointed. Again, that's been listed on our website for months, so we haven't had anybody else apply.
Move to approve Mr. Ensign's appointment to the Chestnut Ridge Park Advisory. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Route 2 I-68.
Also, Dr. John Deskins. He was appointed to fill an unexpired term, and he would like to be reappointed. This would be.
This would be to a full four-year term, which would be through, I think he's got the dates wrong on here, but it should be through 2028, not 2026. So we haven't had anybody else apply or be interested.
Move to amend the recommendation to 2028 and approve as presented.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right. Next item on the agenda is consideration of engagement agreement with Eric Hayhurst for legal representation of members of the Montague County Deputy Service Civil, Deputy Share Civil Service Commission.
Move to approve the engagement of Mr. Hayhurst in that capacity.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right. Any other new business? Okay. Reports from elected officials and/or department supervisors? Okay, seeing none. Reports from county commissioners. Jeff?
Just a couple of things. Our pool at Camp Muffley has had a wonderful kickoff. We had a, our parks director shared a picture with me the other day of the completely full. There wasn't any space open on the grass, and I believe there were summers where we probably didn't have that many people in the pool the entire summer other than camps before. So it's, so far this summer, it's been a resounding success, and I encourage anyone to get out there. It's a wonderful facility and very, very affordable for the public. I will make one clarification on an issue that was brought up regarding the assessor's employees desiring to have a vote to unionize. What we said in our comment was that we don't have a required action to approve the assessor's office employees to have a vote. If they want to have a vote, they can have a vote at any time. They don't need our permission to do that. That was what was stated in our letter, and that's been our position all along. So we have not denied an opportunity to have a vote, and we've expressed that to them. So that's pretty much all I'll say on that point, so.
Tom? Commissioner Bloom?
Yeah, Chestnut Ridge Park had their first concert, had the largest turnout they've ever had, over 300 people, and everyone's pleased with the new stage that was built. Since the other one fell apart, we're really glad that it's much safer. Also on, let's see, it was Monday evening, I was fortunate to be there to represent the commission to greet the W baseball team. And then last night, I represented them at the CVB meeting and also the Black Bears game, which had about 1,500 people show up. So it was a good first start and turnout and hope where people go out there. And that's it.
Okay. Since our last meeting, last Thursday, both commissioners, both my fellow commissioners participated with me in a W hospital's ribbon cutting for their new rehabilitation center up at UTC. And I had a broadband call, and I went to Dr. Smith's retirement get-together. Commissioner Arnett, you were there. I don't know if you got a chance to stop by, Tom. It was a busy day. And then I had a meeting with the city manager and Russ Rogerson after that. Friday, we had staff reports and a broadband tag-up. Monday, I had a meeting with a constituent, and then I had a call with legal counsel regarding personnel matter in another department. Tuesday, yesterday, we had a call with our HR consultants. That's our regular, every two-week call. And the administrator and I also participated in the final call with USI to talk about the rates, the health care rates. Today is a regular day. Friday, we have staff reports and a broadband tag-up. And that's all I had from my schedule. You are correct, Commissioner Arnett. I mean, you guys can keep repeating the saying that we need to pass a resolution for the employees to take a vote, but just keep saying it doesn't make it through. So I wish you would correct that in the public. I think the, you know, the radio has done a good job of correcting that misnomer. And then I'll just, I'll end on, in my term as commission, I always try to just listen to everything that's said when people come into these meetings. We spend an awful lot of time trying to do right by our employees, and I'll defend that to anybody, and I'll show them the facts. But I simply, when, you know, when you're doing this job, one quote that I rely on all the time is from Brigham Young, and it's, "He who takes offense when no offense intended is intended is a fool, and he who takes offense when offense is intended is a greater fool." So I'll just, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.